The city council meeting. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, can I have roll call, Sid?
Counselor Abels.
President.
Ms. Gates.
Hi, I'm here.
Counselor Strobel. Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here, thank you. Okay, we are at the first-
Cole is connecting right now, Sadie. I see that. Thank you. Okay.
We're entering the first citizen and community group comment. Is there anybody wishing to comment at this point?
I don't see anybody with their hands up. So, oh, no, I'm sorry, we do. We have Nicole. Let me bring her in. Go ahead, Nicole.
Guys, I just had a quick question concern that's kind of been, that I've heard from other members of the community in the mayor. You know, sometimes you post things on the uncensored page, sometimes it's on the ECW page. And just wondering where we can get a general place to go for all the information that Mayor Drinkwine would like to present to the community, somewhere where it's available for everyone in the community, whether that be something we can all sign up for, like email alerts, or just something that's readily available for all members of the community.
That's a good question. We have the Facebook city page. Have we been updating that, Melanie? I guess that's a question for you.
Yes, we have been updating that. That's updated by city staff. It's not updated by counselors or by our mayor. It is city staff, but that is a, that's where we typically will put it on our website and we'll post it at our city Facebook page.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I think that more people, you know, that you're the mayor and they want to hear your comforting voice and they want to know, you know, how you feel about the wildfires and, you know, all the other issues going on. And just trying to find a venue where that is available for all members of the community to be able to access. So if that's the city page, then that's where we shall go.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. It's nice to hear my voice is appealing. I don't always get that. Sometimes I've said the wrong things and I hear just the opposite, but I can tell you, I've been on this fire since the beginning, on the ground, in the evacuation sites, back and forth, all night long. Seventy-two hours I hadn't slept to make sure that we kept our city safe, and that was my main concern. I kept in contact with Denise Carey at all times and let her know what I was up to, where I was at, what I was doing, to try and keep the people informed the best of our ability. Sometimes we hit it wrong. I get that. But that was the city and we were in a very different kind of situation at this point. Our city was in something I thought I would never see in my lifetime. Circumstances were different. It was really hard communicating at times. Everybody was being evacuated and getting to everybody and getting the message out was very difficult. But I think we, we pulled it together the best we could, and I think all of you are a part of that, and I would hope that that kind of fills you in a little bit.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can, Nicole, can I just get your last name and address for the record, please?
Of course. My last name is Gardner Austin. That's G-A-R-D-N-E-R hyphen A-U-S-T-I-N. And I'm on 287 Northwest Carey Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments on there?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, let's move to the consent agenda. All of you have had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Is there any items that you need questions answered or anything before we pass them? No? Okay, can I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, first, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. We are at the council business. The Estacada wildfires update. Now, this is kind of a subject that I think there's a lot of things out there that we're going to have to discuss. There was a lot of misinformation coming from different directions. The county was having trouble getting their, their instructions straight. We were having trouble getting it out properly. There were times when we heard something and we put it out, but it was not exactly true. The county wasn't here. They didn't exactly know what was happening. That was one issue. Another issue was that I'd like to bring up, and this is only because it involved me, and I felt like the community thought that that wasn't coming straight from the mayor. I was in the tactical room when ODF, the Forest Service, the state police, were deciding whether to call an evac. They were talking about it at that time. We were still in two. The ODF, who is in charge of calling an evacuation, that is their job, in the middle of that meeting turned to me and says, Mayor Drinkwine, you are going to an evac three. You need to get your people out of there. Call your city folk. I immediately after that call called Denise Carey. Now, mind you, the county was three hours after that before they finally called their evac notice on three. That three hours, had that fire been more dangerous, could have cost us. All right? I felt like at that point in time, my job as the mayor on that call list, being the number one person sitting in that room, hearing straight away from them to call my people, which I did, was semi-ignored. And I don't mean to be mean on the way I put that. But in that moment, with that kind of danger at our back door and not knowing and having different information out there, the, a group that is on neighborhood watch, in fact, was going against what I put out because they said that wasn't true. Now, if I'm sitting in the tactical room with these people and my job is to make a call at that time, that is what I will do. And I expect that the community will understand that the mayor is saying, hey, this is a dangerous situation. We have to get out. That did not happen. That was a fault of our emergency system because it did not work at that point. So I asked that we take a look at this emergency evacuation system we have in place for emergencies and, and, and fine tune it. Figure out how it can work immediately and how we can get through this in one piece altogether for the future of this emergency plan. I would like all your buy-in on that. I don't know how you feel. You'll have an opportunity to tell me, I'm sure. But I would hope that we would do it right next time. People are asking questions. They don't know who to trust out there, and that, that shouldn't happen, not in our community. I think we all work together to make a safe place for people to live and we should accommodate that. So that's really all I have to say on it. Jerry?
I, I, I guess I'm not familiar with what this issue was. Can you fill me in on what, what happened? I honestly don't know.
Yeah, sure. I was called in the morning of the fire when the evacuation notices went up by the tactical force at the Forest Service to come. ODF being the ones who call the evacuation notice. They're the first response to the evacuation. They decide whether we have an evacuation. I'm sitting in the control room, ODF, the Forest Service, the state police, and our local police. They are having a discussion on what's going to happen if we have to call an evac three and how fast we can get people out. We're all deciding this and, you know, how we're going to go about this. The middle of that phone call, ODF, who calls the evac, gets the call from on the lines. They said, hey, the fire has jumped. It's an emergency situation. We're going evac three. He turns to me and he says, Mayor Drinkwine, you need to get on the phone to your people and notify them. We are in the evacuation three and they need to leave immediately. I called Denise Carey, the top of the phone chart, immediately after that call. I notify her that we are in an evac three. That's the last I heard of it. And so the county came out and said it's an evac three, which was three hours later. Yeah, go ahead, Denise.
Oh, I was just going to say then, I talked to Melanie and we were getting conflicting. I think what the mayor is saying is we need to look at the, the whole system because everyone that was giving us information, they weren't all the same. And so we're getting this different message from the EOC, which, you know, you think they're in charge. And so we need to look at the whole system to see how, when, when we aren't in charge of our own emergency, it needs to be more clear who we are supposed to be looking at during those emergencies. So we need to look at our whole emergency system. And I agree with the mayor. We need to look at it, see what it says because it didn't work. It didn't work this time. And so it, it's hard when you aren't in charge of, of what's going on because you're hearing it from all these different places. So we need to work with the county and the state on when emergencies like this happen. We need to have one place because there wasn't one place to get information anymore. It was coming from all over.
I agree. Katie, you have some question?
I just wanted to add something to, to what Denise was saying, what you were saying, and to Jerry, to help answer Jerry's question. So after, after Mayor Drinkwine got off the phone with Denise Carey on, on Wednesday, the, that would be the ninth, he called me and he asked me to try to spread that message as far and wide as I could that we were going to level three to try to save as many people that would, that would receive the message as possible. That occurred during the 10 o'clock hour. I don't know the exact time. That would be sometime between my phone call with him. I think that was 10:34 and by the time I left Estacada or by, you know, sometime after the 11 o'clock hour. However, at 11:04, the city staff did come out to try to basically contradict the call that the mayor had put out on, on Facebook. He asked me to share it far and wide, and I did. I said specifically that I just got off the phone with Mayor Drinkwine, who wanted me to communicate to everybody that we are going to level three and that you needed to get out. And at that time, then someone from city staff did go on Facebook and say, no, 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 we're still level two. So I think that is part of what Mayor Drinkwine is saying in the fact that even his own efforts to initiate or instigate an evacuation was undermined by the city staff on that day. So I think that also had something to do with it.
Well, Melanie, you might want to pipe in here because you were the one that was in contact with the EOC during this time.
Yeah, I was, I was the one that reiterated that we were still at level two because I started hearing that we were, people were saying we were at level three, and I hadn't got the whole story of why, but I double-checked the map, which is where the information was coming from, as far as I knew, for the evacuations. And at that, that time, we were still at level two. And so I did put a post on Facebook that said, at this time, according to the county map, the city is still at level two evacuation. And it sounds like I should have made some phone calls before I put that out there, just to confirm that I was getting the right information. It was like pre-information because it hadn't been made completely public yet. And so I think that's where the, it was that gap of time that caused that confusion.
So was there no city staff in this, in this meeting that you were in, Sean, or was it just, just you?
It was just me. They called me to come to this meeting with, for, I don't think they intended to have a level three called at the same time this meeting was going on. It was more of a, a meeting about how we would handle an evacuation, what we would do if the circumstances did erupt, where would we send people, you know, where, it was kind of that kind of meeting. But because it was the ODF who calls the evacuation, that's their job, they were hands-on. So they turned to me and they said, their exact words, Mayor Drinkwine, call your staff. Let them know. I did that and that's where it stopped. But my problem with this whole thing is that was a critical time. You had a three-hour span before the county finally caught up and the map on my phone changed to red. This is what most people were depending on because they didn't know. There was so much misinformation out there. They thought I was telling a fib because it was on these other sites saying that I wasn't truthful, that we were still in two, instead of, you know, it being accepted and we were getting out at an earlier time. Which in turn, when they finally did accept this, there was an hour, almost two-hour wait to get from Estacada to Sandy. Now, my point in this whole thing is if that fire had jumped and traveled as fast as it was, they were thinking it was going to, that three hours could have been the difference between casualty and no casualty. That's where I have the issue.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. There's, it's definitely broken because I, I have not heard any of this yet. This is the first time I'm hearing of any of it.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. And it wasn't to put anybody down, but I just want us to go over this emergency plan and get it right because this was the first call that I can honestly say that I ever thought I would experience where I was afraid for people. When you look at the areas that were so close to the city, it would have took one little jump and it would have been in our city and it would have been all over. And the discussion we'd be having now would be totally different.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So that's just, that's just what I wanted to get there. Kimberly, yes?
Yeah, I think one of our key takeaways from this is communication in general and the social media of our city government. And there were, I feel like there was a couple of very large opportunities to, to look and learn from, from items, and I think this is one of them in that we, we need to make sure that whoever is the person that's posting to social media is, is your direct contact, I think. I'm having to pass through, and if you are going to be the liaison to the city government or if that's Denise and kind of formalizing what that looks like, I'm really surprised that the EOC didn't have a governmental liaison who normally would be passing that information to you. And also working in, in emergency management, I know how frustrating it is when you get a message and it takes forever for it to get out or for it to be on a verifiable source. And that's when, you know, we, we rely on the people's trust in the mayor to, if you, you needed to come on Facebook and say, this is what I am told. This is what I know. I know you don't see it yet, but I'm trying to save lives. I think there's a whole bunch of different ways we could have leveraged our communications channels and things that we should look at after the fact, including, you know, folks not, some people, like going back to what Nicole was saying, some folks not knowing, even if Mayor Drinkwine was okay because they hadn't seen him on social media anywhere, they hadn't seen any statements from him and, and, and looking for that, that kind of leadership. So I definitely think communication is going to be a big, a big piece for, for our audit after the fact. And I agree, it didn't work right. I, I, I knew when you knew about the, the level three through my connection and I kept waiting for the map to change and it didn't. And I was getting so frustrated because we knew what it was and it wasn't getting out to folks. And then it takes even longer for the text message system to get to you.
That's right.
So yeah, there was a whole bunch of things that are missed and thank, thank God we're not having a worse conversation.
Yeah, I, I agree totally, and I thank you for that comment because that really hits home and that's exactly what I'm trying to express. But I think you hit it right on the nail, so thank you about that. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment on this before we go further? Melanie?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the, the Facebook post that I made on, I believe it was Thursday, about when the firefighters, ODF and, you know, all the firefighters had to, were told to pull off the fire for a little bit. I was at the EOC at that time and I got that message. It was a very distressing message to receive, knowing that there were still people in town that they, they weren't in the official, you know, the professional firefighters who had radios connected saying, hey, you guys need to pull back. And we were told at the time that they were leaving Estacada, which that turned out to not be accurate. Based on the source I was getting it from, I took it at face value. And I learned at that, after this, I have learned fact-check, double, you know, get, get it from a different source as well, ask more questions because I misunderstood. Well, I don't know. I don't think I misunderstood. That was actually what was said. But I should have questioned that because it should have gone, that doesn't make sense. Ask more questions. And I did not do that. I took it at face value. I know it terrified people. It terrified me at the moment to know that I had information that people might not get. And if the fire had behaved in the way they were concerned it was going to, I'm afraid that the volunteers out there who were trying to fight the fire would not have fared very well because they, it was, it was kind of a dire situation that afternoon with not knowing which, how the fire was going to behave. And so I apologize for distressing everybody and not asking more questions and for just taking that at face value. But I was, I was in a place where I thought I was getting completely accurate information and things were just moving so quickly those first three days or so. It was very hard to get the, the complete story before the story changed and it was something else. And so it's definitely something to talk about. I think that people had best intentions and were doing their jobs, but how we all interwove in that got complicated. So. Yeah, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer questions about that, but I know that's caused a lot of distress, so.
Well, no, we appreciate you bringing that forward, but you only did what you were told. This is not a blame game. This is a broken system. I want to try to fix it. I don't want to blame anybody. I don't want to make it anybody's issue. But I, I want us to get it right next time, if there is a next time, and I hope there never is. But I don't want to ever be in that situation again. Paul Strobel, yes, go ahead.
So you brought up the concern, Sean. I think it's a good one too, and it sounds like the two issues, right? One, maybe we need to get like, I think Kimberly was saying that someone involved with the city have a liaison with you and those things. But was the other issue, is that with the county? Is that what you're saying? Is that the county didn't update their map quickly enough?
Well, I think the information was misconstrued. The county was behind the eight ball. Like I said, they were three hours out before the maps even changed on the phone. Now, I was at the first evacuation site with all the evacuees at Fred Meyer over in Sandy. Then I proceeded up to the second evacuation site and the third evacuation site. But I was at that evacuation site. I had been there for an hour before their map even updated. That's a problem. And you got to admit, you know, that, that critical time could have been the difference for us because we were here. And Estacada was coming over the backside. It was on Cadno. I mean, you could drive down Cadno to the end and see the burned area. One house is burned to the ground, but that's how close it was. And for me, that's like, what, 1,500 feet from the CAS? I mean, this, this, that's serious. That's very serious to me. And I, I just want to make sure that we are prepared in the future. I never want to have to face that nightmare. And that keeps blending in my head every night I go to sleep because I'm thinking to myself, had it not, had there been some way that that fire jumped, would we have all made it out? Okay, yeah, Kimberly?
No, please go ahead and finish your thought.
I, I just want to, I mean, it was just about getting it right. I just want to get it right. I do. And that's all I really wanted to say. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Do we have any city staff that have any emergency management training or experience? Or is this a totally new ball of wax for, for all of our city staff?
No, I don't think so.
I'm going to let Melanie address that because she has been to training Washington DC and that, and she is our emergency manager and she was at the EOC and that's where she was getting all her information, even the one that was incorrect. But I'm going to let Melanie talk to that.
Sure, I have, I've had some training. We have some staff that, it's been a few years now. They've taken the ICS Incident Command System training so that they understand, that really just helps you understand how the system works. And each, you know, there's planning, there's operations, there's finance, there's logistics. It's a, it's a system that's in place. So we've, we've done a slight amount of training and I'm probably the most trained. And then we also do, we do, what are those called? When you practice? We practice every year usually. We'll typically be involved with the county or we'll do a little exercise here, tabletop kind of exercise and talk through things with the fire district, the school district. And so we've done some things like that. And usually every time we do, we're like, wow, it's good we did this because, and it is typically in miscommunication that would have happened, or we think that we have something well organized and we're like, wow, that could have gone awry. And so whenever we do those, and it's usually on an annual basis, we're really glad we've done them. But I think that for the most part, you know, we haven't had real life experience in it until, until right now.
If I may, Melanie, can I ask you a question? I mean, I remember as a counselor, us going through the management call system for emergency calling, you know, the, the call chart and everything. I thought that was the emergency procedure from what we learned in council, back when I was a counselor, because we went through that. You had a, a call chart, you know, first call, second call, the whole thing, who we go through, who we contact, where we, that wasn't the emergency plan?
That, that is our emergency plan, yes. But when everything breaks loose, it turned out in this instance, there's so many agencies and there was varying locations that I felt like, I feel like even when I finally went up, by the time I got my family settled Wednesday afternoon, I went up to the county because I just felt like I needed to be there at the EOC. Otherwise, I didn't know if I was going to get as much information. It turned out there wasn't a place for cities to, to be, so I just kind of sat in the corner of the main reporting room. I sit next to the gal who is from CCOM and was working on the maps and trying to get those correct. And there wasn't necessarily a place for us and things were moving so fast. They, they have like meetings like at 8:30 and at 5:00 they'll have the operational meetings and everybody comes back because fire was upstairs and law enforcement was some, you know, they were spread out all over the place. Everybody comes back and each section reports out, but those weren't even happening necessarily at that point. And so, and then Thursday, it got a little more intense. I went back on Thursday and it took me an hour to get off the hill from, from the county up at the top of the hill down to 205. Once I was on 205, I was fine, but then my family got worried because we were in Happy Valley and they thought, you know, at that point, the EOC was potentially going to have to get moved if, if Oregon City bumped up a notch. And then if I went to Wilsonville or wherever that was at, they're like, if I go, I might not get back to them and they might have to move. And so on Friday, I just stayed put. I logged into the meetings. Thank goodness we're getting good at Zoom. And I, I felt like I was really able to get pretty much just as much information that way. I was able to connect personally with Brendan Paxton from Clackamas Fire and we were able to talk while I was there, which was nice. But then he stayed, he did stay in touch with me even during the time that I wasn't there. And so it, there was a plan. This didn't all go according to plan. So I, it's good to revisit it and we'll need to definitely do some after-action evaluation of what, what we'll do if something happens again.
I agree. I agree. Are there any more questions to this? No? Okay, before we go off the subject, I just want to make a shout out to Brett Paris, Youngberg, Edgefield, Platt. I mean, I could go on and on for hours for the locals that came out. They did an amazing job at keeping that out of our back door and I can't even begin to thank them for what they did for us. I've sat down with a, a meeting with them, along with Melanie from our city office, to go over their concerns, and they have a few. And I think it's granted what, what they're worried about in, in the county and, and things that we got to talk about. But at the same time, I think we can work through this. And I think our fire department that we have here, I think we can find a strategy that works for everyone and I hope we can come to that conclusion. So I just want to thank the locals for stepping up because if it wasn't for them, I have a feeling that our backside of our city would be on fire. They, they did an amazing job.
And Mayor, not to, not to interrupt you, but I am the only one that's on the list on the agenda. But we do have Clackamas Fire here. Fire chief is here and Denise might want to introduce them, but they are here kicking reports, answer questions as well. And I will stop talking now.
No, that's good. That's good. Can we let some of them in? Anyone?
They're in. So if Chief Charlton wants to start and make some comments and update us, that would be great.
Great.
Sure, happy to. Good evening, Mayor Drinkwine, members of council and also members of the city staff. Thank you for your comments this evening. I think a couple of things that really resonate is the support of the community. And like the mayor talked about, the, the efforts of really the community coming together in these times of a disaster. And then also to Melanie's point about an after-action review. A lot of things come out of the AAR, if you will, where we discuss communications, challenges and opportunities. But more importantly, is if we're ever faced with this again, and I, and I truly hope we never are, that we, that we learn from what we just went through and we ensure that the community is, is even more safe moving forward. So again, thank you for your comments. I do have a few updates tonight if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
A few questions that Denise sent over and we have a few of our staff to answer those. So I'll try not to be too repetitive. I know there's a ton of information out there. But again, and we've been sharing this since the start of these devastating fires, is our thoughts, hearts and prayers are with those that have been. again, and we've been sharing this since the start of these devastating fires is our uh, thoughts, hearts and prayers are with those that have been uh, so incredibly impacted by these fires across uh, the fire districts, across Clackamas County and across the state of Oregon. Uh, as we understand over the last two weeks, there's about a million acres across uh, the state of Oregon that has burned or is burning. And certainly three of the largest fires, the Riverside Fire, which we're very familiar with here in Estacada, the Beechey Creek Fire, which is in Clackamas County, and then the Lions Head Fire, which is sort of attached to the Beechey Creek Fire and moving uh, east towards Warm Springs. So again, hundreds of thousands of acres on fire, either in or very close to Clackamas County. Uh, as you know, the Riverside Fire is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand acres currently. And that is being managed by the federal type one incident management team. They've been here since uh, Thursday, the tenth, and they're they're still here and they continue to uh, work hard to uh, create a line around that fire and and work towards containment. And then what is known as the North Cascade Complex, and actually I saw today that they may rename it the Clackamas County Fires. But that would be the Doughty Road Fire, the Unger Fire, the Will Hoyt Fire and the Graves Creek Fire. So just a few updates there. The Doughty Fire, about fifteen hundred acres. The Unger Fire, four hundred and ninety-seven acres. The Will Hoyt Fire, five hundred and thirty-four acres and the Graves Creek Fire, about forty-four acres. And I apologize, I know it's a lot of information, but if you go to the website Northwest Interagency Coordination Center or NWCC, they have a, they call it a large fire map and you can look at details of all of the fires in Oregon. And right now there's a new fire down in Southern Oregon called the Slater Fire. So again, uh, it gives you greater detail. It talks about uh, the cause of the fire, the size, size of the fire and the number of resources that are working. Uh, talking about resources, uh, what an incredible event our community has had to go through for the past two weeks. For the first seventy-two hours, we were in what we call initial attack. Uh, we had used all of our firefighting resources from across Clackamas County, not only on these fires, but we had a lot, a number of major structure fires going on as well. And we're working on a complete um, uh, sort of an incident history of all of the different events that have gotten us uh, sort of through the first two weeks of these devastating fires to include a number of significant uh, commercial and residential fires where we had to have uh, some resources dedicated to those as well. So once we exhaust all of our firefighting resources from Clackamas County, we reach out to Multnomah County, Washington County, and that's done through automatic or mutual aid. Then we reached out to Marion County, which is our next closest neighbor, but we know they were dealing with some very devastating fires. And then after that, we worked with the State Fire Marshal's Office to declare a conflagration. And under the State Conflagration Act, this is approved by the governor and that opens up uh, more firefighting resources from across the state. Uh, once the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office Incident Management Team arrived, they took uh, command, if you will, and started to order up those resources. And we had firefighters from uh, Umatilla and Lynn County and Clatsop County. Uh, we had uh, about fifty different fire apparatus come into our county from across, across Oregon. We also worked very closely with the Oregon Department of Forestry. They provided resources on these fires. Certainly that federal type one incident management team. And then we can't say enough about the community members really stepping up and uh, helping their neighbors. And this is what we see in these times of stress, these times of disaster. Neighbors step up and they help, help neighbors. And and I think Mayor Drinkwine, your, your comments uh, really resonate with us about the the great work that they did out in the communities. Um, community support, uh, we've had an outpouring of support and these are donations of uh, food, supplies, donated equipment, uh, financial contributions. And I know before the meeting started, I think there was some conversation around where, where do you find some financial resources to help those that are impacted? And uh, one source, and we'll send you more information tomorrow, tomorrow morning is the Clackamas Emergency Services Foundation. So this is a foundation we've had at the fire district for about twenty years. We have a little over fifty-three thousand dollars in financial donations that have come in in the last two weeks. And we want to immediately get those funds out to impacted residents across uh, the service areas within Clackamas County. So I know it's just one small piece, but if we can get fifty thousand dollars out to those impacted, at least it's, it may uh, begin to help. So we'll get information out on how uh, folks can access that. And that website is CESF.us. So we'll have a fillable form there both for agencies and individuals because we want to make sure that if we have an agency that is in need of support, we can help them as well.
Well, we thank you for that.
Uh, next, uh, the state resources. So the incident management team from the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, they demobilized last Thursday. That was the first day we really started to get some rain. As soon as they demobilized, we maintained uh, ten firefighting apparatus dedicated to the, to the wa- wildfires, both north and south within Clackamas County. And we continued that patrolling and and we do today. So we continue to provide resources, but really the heavy lift right now is by, is by the federal type one team and the Oregon Department of Forestry. Over the weekend, uh, Denise sent us a few questions and we have staff here tonight and I'd like to answer those if we, if we have time. And I know you're, you have a full agenda, but uh, the first question, and we'll ask our division chief Brian Stewart, who has been out on the Doughty Road Fire for the majority of time to answer this question. And it is, uh, what was the timeline for response on the Doughty Fire? Was that a a fire that Clackamas Fire was responsible to respond to or another agency? So Chief Stewart, if you're on, there you are, if you could answer that.
Hi, certainly. Uh, thank you for the question. Thank you, uh, Mayor Drinkwine and Council for uh, giving me the time this evening. Uh, I was the IC or one of the incident commanders on the Doughty Fire while I was under uh, local control. And then when the Oregon State Fire Marshal came in with the incident management team, I switched to one of my roles with that team and I became a structural group supervisor. Uh, essentially uh, over the entire Doughty Fire, at least during day shift. Uh, in terms of who's responsible for servicing that area, I think there's like a couple of answers to it. First, it falls within, uh, at least where the investigators are currently targeting the area of origin, falls within Estacada Rural Fire Protection District number sixty-nine's geographical boundaries. And as you are all aware, Clackamas Fire, uh, District Number One is providing all services uh, for Estacada Rural Fire uh, Protection District number sixty-nine. So Clackamas Fire had the responsibility to respond to that incident. Um, and it also falls within ODF's uh, boundaries. And so they had responsibility as well. Uh, that being said, uh, when the fire began on nine seven, uh, it was dispatched at nine, at uh, nine sixteen in the evening. At this point in the day, uh, certainly there were multiple calls going on within Clackamas Fire, but specifically within Estacada, there were two active fires already uh, underway. Uh, the first was at Wildcat Mountain in Douglas. Uh, Engine three thirty, uh, and Brush three thirty, which be out of the Estacada Main Station, uh, were on that fire, as well as there was a fire on South Springwater within the Estacada Fire District boundaries, uh, which were, which was being serviced by Battalion Chief three zero three, uh, which is out of Oregon City. And then two engines, uh, one of which was out of the South Battalion, one of which was out of our North Battalion. Uh, this day we had a plan for the uh, heat and wind events. Uh, and so our operations chief uh, upstaffed some units. So in addition to our normal staffing of about twenty-three, twenty-four units per day, the operations chief added two type one or or large structural engines. One type three, which is an interface engine. We also had two type six engines, which are the smaller brush trucks. And then we had additional command staff uh, uh, online as well. So we were prepared. Um, it was with many more additional resources than than a normal day. And when this call came in, the first arriving unit, which was Brush three eighteen, that unit would normally be assigned to our Eagle Creek Fire Station, uh, but they were coming from another fire uh, in the boring area, Tickle Creek and Holst. So the fire was dispatched at twenty-one sixteen and Brush three eighteen coming from that fire arrived at twenty-one forty-one. And within seventeen minutes of that first unit arriving, we had a total of nine units on scene, including one battalion chief, one type one engine, two type three, or those interface engines, three type six engines, which are the brush trucks and two water tenders. Uh, I should note that during this event, uh, we requested additional assistance from uh, for strike teams and task forces from Washington, Multnomah, Marion Counties. Uh, neither, none of those counties could provide such assistance at the time. Uh, we didn't get those until the eighth, um, but we did get assistance from Sandy Fire on the uh, on the Doughty Fire uh, itself. Uh, so that was the initial response. And of course, we maintained that and worked through that, uh, whether it was with local resources or with the state resources that uh, Chief Charlton talked about, whether they were from the State Fire Marshal's pool or from ODF. Uh, currently the fire is under investigation. Uh, the initial investigation team included the state, Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, Oregon State Police, Clackamas Fire District One Investigators. Um, and now there are two investigators representing uh, Oregon Department of Forestry, one from Southern Oregon and one from the Spokane area uh, that are currently investigating uh, that fire. And that is what I have uh, to update with, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Brian? No? We thank you, sir, for that update. That was wonderful. You were very informative. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Drinkwine, just two more questions. Next question we'll ask Battalion Chief Steve Dieters, who is out in the Estacada uh, community to answer this question. That is, uh, what is the plan going forward for Clackamas Fire if, when another disaster like this occurs? How will the district view community resources that are available, such as volunteers and equipment? Steve Dieters.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh, councilors and staff for uh, giving us the opportunity tonight. Uh, currently at Clackamas Fire, we do have a volunteer program that's made up of suppression firefighters and um, support firefighters and water tender operators. And we also have what's called a CERT team or a Community Emergency Response Team. Uh, those folks get training in disaster preparedness and natural disaster mitigation, some light search and rescue and some medical um, triage uh, training. Uh, so that's an ongoing program that we have and um, we accept uh, uh, members of that. It's, we have our emergency manager, Greg Ramirez, is in charge of that program. And um, there is a um, branch of the CERT team in Estacada that's been here for some time. And when we did the contract for service, we uh, enveloped them into that part of it, too. So uh, we can certainly provide information about how people can get uh, involved that way or during the volunteer uh, recruitment process. We just started another class amidst all of this. Uh, we still started another class of twenty-seven community responders uh, that have been in class for about two weeks now. So they'll be out and about uh, when they're finished training. And then I will say that uh, being here at this station during this event, we were, you know, inundated with people that had equipment, had stuff to do and uh, or to use. And I'll tell you, everybody that I came in contact with, I took that information. I I put it forward. And so hopefully they were part of that resource tool. But moving forward, I think if we could send the message of uh, CERT is sort of a way for them to be involved and it gives communication for us to them, to those community responders. So we kind of know where they're at, what they're doing, and we're all working towards the same goal. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Kimberly?
Yeah, as a a member of CERT, um, there would, that was definitely a communication pitfall. We didn't get an ask to help come participate and, or help in any way until late Friday. Um, and so I I don't know if that was because who the contact was and he was um, directly impacted or or certain leader, if you will. Um, but that was something that we were trying, something to figure out what is our connection point in so we could come help. Um, so if there's something we can do with that or or create some redundancies, um, I think that'd be super helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. I can follow up with our, our coordinator and make sure that there's those systems in place to make sure that we can notify people. That's one of the advantages to falling under uh, the Clackamas uh, Fire CERT is we can get you those tools and active nine-one-one and all of the communication pieces that we use internally.
Yeah, I have a question if I might. Um, just a thought. I mean, it, according to what I know, most of these loggers, if they work for Warehouser or some of these logger companies are already certed in fire uh, precaution when they're out there doing these cuts. So is there a way, I don't know if this is possible or not, that we can put together a wildfire fighting crew uh, that would be called in in circumstances like this where all the chips are down and it gets like it did this time? Um, and 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 get them the proper training on top of what they might have to have their CERT uh, that might work for us? Is that, is that a possibility? Is that something we could look at or? I'm just wondering.
Uh, you know, uh, certainly Chief chime in here, but I I would say that it's not impossible. Um, CERT has many, many different layers to it right now. Wildfire is not one of them currently. I I have to say that, but I I would say nothing is impossible or out of, out of the realm of consideration. Thank you.
And and Mr. Mayor, uh, to your point, uh, our Public Information Officer Brandon Paxton and I were just having this conversation a few hours ago about how do we really get out and connect with the community and and use their expertise, that local knowledge, understanding uh, sort of the geography, understanding the resources that they bring to bear. And and we had folks, um, you know, running donated uh, dozers to cut fire lines. So I think unfortunately, we had to go through this major disaster, but I think coming out of it, the lessons learned will help us build those relationships, understand where the resources are and better utilize those resources in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right.
Oh, sorry, just one last question that we won't take much more of your time. Uh, last question is, uh, will there be any changes in response preparedness for wildland fires or other disasters following this event? And we have uh, Brent Olson, who's a battalion chief at Clackamas Fire, who is out on the Riverside Fire. But uh, as important to that role is he has worked very hard to leverage federal dollars for training. So Chief Olson, if you're on, I know you're headed to the Slater Fire, if you'd sort of talk about some of our training.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council members. Uh, yeah, we uh, we did uh, receive a training grant uh, this previous year uh, to the tune of about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And we were able to get all of our uh, officers, uh, the didactic portion of the engine boss training, uh, which is kind of that first line supervisor uh, for wildland events. So I definitely wasn't in anticipation of this particular event, but we were sure glad that we did have uh, that we kind of leaned forward uh, over the past year to get that training. We will continue uh, to go after these uh, grants, uh, specifically for wildland training. Uh, just because as we have now seen, we have a very large wildland urban interface problem in and around uh, Estacada area, as well as others within uh, Fire District Number One. So um, that's kind of, kind of the update uh, that I have from here. I apologize I'm not on video. I am, like the fire chief said, I am headed down to uh, Southern Oregon on another fire.
Hey, well, we thank you. That was an excellent report.
And then just uh, one last thing to note is uh, the Fire District has put in a grant and Chief Stewart can speak to it, but it's really about that preparedness and fuel, fuel mitigation. So Brian, just briefly, if you can, then we'll close out.
Yes, sir. Just uh, thank you again for, for the question. So back in February or March, we submitted a grant or the Fire Prevention and Safety series of grants through FEMA. And we submitted a grant for a hundred and ninety-four thousand uh, dollars, which covers three main activities. Uh, the first of which is uh, it's all centered around wildland urban interface uh, activities. But the first is education, uh, giving us the, the funds to develop staff education programs uh, specific to the wildfire uh, risk. Secondly, is fuels mitigation, and a couple of different strategies for that, one of which includes looking to reduce uh, the amount of uh, debris burning that that occurs and giving people the option of using chippers uh, and and supporting that. And then the third tier to it would be looking for uh, actual mitigating uh, or preventing uh, fire from attacking homes uh, through the use of rooftop or gutter mounted sprinklers. So those are the kind of the three aspects to that grant. Uh, and we'll be waiting to hear back on that. Hopefully by the end of the close of the federal fiscal year, which should be the end of this month, uh, but with COVID, things have been getting stretched out.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy to answer any other questions. I know this is just the start of a lot of conversations. We wanted to give you just a brief update tonight.
And we appreciate that. You were very informative and uh, we'll go forward on this and see what comes up. Are there any more questions for him before we uh, allow him to, to escape? No? Okay, great. Thank you, Chief Carlton. We appreciate you. Okay, um, the next on our list is a resolution twenty twenty dash zero one six, a resolution declaring a local a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures. Okay, so you've heard the motion on the table. Does there any discussion that we want to have on this?
Yes, I do. I have something I'd like to ask actually to um, the city staff that actually drafted this ordinance. Um, so under action point two of this ordinance, it uh, references city code chapter two Um, so under action point two of this ordinance, it uh references city code chapter two point three six. Um, however, the action items um listed under, I'm sorry, the, the items listed or action item five of this uh emergency ordinance being A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H are referencing ordinance uh two thousand dash zero five, it says in there zero five dash two thousand. However, um, that ordinance has been replaced in two thousand and fifteen um with our new amended chapter two point three six. And I guess I'm kind of curious as to why we are not using our most recent amendments of our emergency management code as it's cited in the emergency declaration. Um, why are we are using an archaic or outdated uh ordinance for this particular emergency declaration was my one question.
Okay, I think that's for city staff. Um, who do I direct it to? You Denise or you Melanie?
It, it was me. It was a mistake on my part. It was a typo on my part.
All right.
Sorry. It was, um,
Is it, is it possible? Yeah. Is it possible then to get this um actually redrafted and resent to us before approval? Because um, because the way that it's, it's drafted right now, if we were to approve it, um, would be using ordinance that no longer exists on our municipal, in our municipal code.
Yeah, what, what, um, what code is it Sadie that it was supposed to be?
I, I would have
Two point three six.
Two point three six is what we, was, what was written.
Right.
But the actual code, I'd have to look it up. I don't know.
So, but Yeah, so two point three six is, is correct. In our municipal code, two point three six is our, in our emergency management. And I can see some of the, the items that are listed under, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G um, are ones that were derived at one point from ordinance zero five dash two thousand. Um, but uh, but the amend, or but the code itself, the chapter was completely rewritten in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and now has a lot of other action items and uh, and some different verbiage than the ones that are listed. Um, and some of the ones that are listed are also not included in the new uh amendments of that chapter. So I just want to make sure that as we're, you know, approving this emergency declaration, that we are approving our, our emergency declaration based on the emergency management plan that is most uh updated in our code and not using an archaic one.
We will, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I got you. You're kind of cutting in and out.
I get confused if it's muted. Um, we'll correct that and bring it back to you on Monday.
Okay, great. All right, perfect. Um, is there any questions to that before uh we move on? No? Okay. Uh, we were at the next citizen and
Paul, hi, questions?
Oh, go ahead, Paul. I'm sorry.
So this, this expires on the twenty-fifth though, is that right? How does, how does this declaration work if, if we approve it on Monday?
Yeah, we just have to have it reaffirmed by the council and that can be after the fact because a lot of people don't need only monthly. So it will still be fine.
Okay, okay. So let's check in.
Okay. All right. Uh, moving along, we're at the next citizen and community group comment. Uh, do I have any citizens wanting to speak, Sadie?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great. Uh, we are now at mayor council reports and comments, and I will start off with Jerry.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work, the citizens, uh, volunteers, um, just everybody out there, out there doing their part to make, you know, to keep this community the way it is or keep this community living. Um, they, the, the volunteers that went out and fought the fire, um, even the people that were patrolling the, the streets, uh, uh, just an amazing job and uh, thank you all, every last one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. You did an amazing job.
Yep, no doubt. Um, Paul?
I just want to say thank you as well too. I've heard countless uh reports from individuals whose homes were saved either by the agencies or by the volunteers that were out there as well too. And, and these are personal stories that say they were there and the fires were within a hundred feet of my home. Um, I, I'm just so impressed with how the community came together. And then also, uh, just the, the Estacada Community Watch setting up the relief station too. Appreciate all the work that is done on that. That is huge. That is just huge, the amount of work that is done. So very impressed with that and thank you for, for that group, what they're doing over there.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Katie?
Um, well, I have countless people I'd like to thank. Um, personally, I would like to start off by thanking Mayor Drinkwine. Um, he was in communication with me, it felt like almost hourly during the entire thing. Um, I appreciate the level of communication I received from him. Um, I know that uh, moving forward, I would love to have him be more out front and more vo- more vocal um, and, and more of a focal point during emergencies like this because he really was a plethora of information. Um, he really had amazing ideas of how to keep the community safe, how to keep the community going and how to help the community recover after the fact. So thank you to Mayor Drinkwine. I know that this is a thankless job, so you deserve the thanks for this one. Um, also I'd like to thank Joel and Brandy Litkey uh with the um Estacada Community Watch. Um, they also have been a, a part of the response since day one and have done an amazing job. Um, not only in coordinating all of the volunteers that, um, some of them were fighting fires. Some of them were patrolling for the looters and, and patrolling the city during evacuation. Um, but then on Monday, when they got uh of last week, a week from, a week ago today, actually, I don't think a lot of people realize a week ago today is when they got the keys to that command center that was donated to them from the uh, the Sleep and Wellness Center that's next to the Casadero. And in a very, very short period of time, they have been able to make it really a phenomenal show of how strong our community really is. So I want to from the bottom of my heart, thank Joel and Brandy Litkey for that. Um, I also want to, um, I, again, so many people I want to thank, but I'll keep it short. The last person I want to publicly thank is actually Mayor Stan Folliam from Sandy. On Monday night, when I called him and I said, hey, I, I saw that you've been panning out food boxes in Sandy. Can we get those in Estacada? He answered our call. We really do have some amazing friends in Sandy. And the minute I called him and I said, Stan, can you get me any of those food boxes? He called me an hour later and said, I have a refrigerated truck being delivered to you at the eight AM on Tuesday morning with four hundred food boxes. And wow, that, that kind of help from our neighboring city was just amazing. And, and him and Sandy helping hands the organization that his city's been working with so closely. They've, they've kept that assistance coming. They didn't limit it to just that Tuesday. When they saw on Tuesday how much of a need was really there for fresh food and resources for our people. They stepped up and they've been helping with the, the Estacada Community Watch. And then of course, Estacada citizens also saw that and uh have been stepping up in their own ways. But I really just wanted to, to publicly thank those people. That would be Mayor Drinkwine, Mayor Stan Folliam from Sandy and Joel and Brandy Litkey from the Estacada Community Watch. From the bottom of my heart, thank you to all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Uh, Kimberly?
Yeah, I want to echo um a lot of folks' comments and the, the way that the community came together to get, to get through this event um, has just been astonishing and makes me so proud to, to live in Estacada and um, to be able to, to serve on their council for this short period of time. Um, they were able to activate so quickly and integrate themselves within the EOC and to get information out. Um, I, I do want to call out that I want to make sure that in our after action, we're looking at how all of these resources are getting out and are getting distributed and people know about them and make sure that that's been equitable. So that all folks, um, whether or not they're a part of any specific group, know what's happening and know what's going on. Um, I, I love the community center, the, 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 the Community Watches Food Relief Center. I've been down there several times. I, I do also, I feel like I'd be remiss if we didn't also pull out the fact we are still in a pandemic. And I really want to make sure that folks are taking all precautions we can because as those folks are coming through, those are going to be our most vulnerable populations. And so the more that we can have folks wearing masks um, and preventing the spread of COVID nineteen, I think it's, it's super important. And it, those of us who are connected to the folks down there, the more that we can ask for that and to remind them of that. I think that's, that's kind of our duty as to, to protect the health and safety of our community. Um, but again, I want to thank you to everybody. And we have a ton of communication stuff to, to work out. I want to make sure that um, as connected as uh Mayor Drinkwine was to some council members, there are some other council members that didn't hear anything for several days. And so I just want to make sure that um, where we have a system that gets information out to everyone. So we can all reach out to our different uh groups that, that we, we, we run in or that we work with. Um, but again, thank you to the city staff. I know what it's like to work during an event where you're also impacted. Um, it's, it's hard and I, I thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Uh, Justin?
Yeah, wow. Uh, I agree with all of that. I think uh it was pretty amazing watching all of the groups uh step up. I think one that I didn't hear was the uh Mennonites. I would like to thank them as, as well. They did a tremendous job. I know up in the uh, everywhere, but uh, they were an amazing group of people as well. And uh, yeah, I just, just thank everybody for that. And then on a side note, which I can discuss at a different council meeting, I just wanted to let everybody know that I did hear back from the Ethics Commission. And they did dismiss the charge that was against me, nine to zero. So that was a pretty, pretty good win for me. Uh, knew that I didn't, I didn't uh, didn't do anything wrong, but it was nice to hear from them and confirm it. So I just wanted to update everybody on that as well.
Okay. Well, thank you, Justin. Um, my thank yous go war, wa- beyond anything. I mean, I am so overwhelmed and so tired. Uh, so I'm a little punchy. So give me a minute here. Um, I want to thank the Community Watch for everything they did. They stepped up where there was a need and I appreciate that more than I can ever thank them for. Um, I appreciate all the volunteers that saved the back door of Estacada above and beyond. I thank all city staff for being on that phone with me when it counted. I thank Katie and all the other councils for everything that they do daily and the fact that their face are still on my computer. That means we're still here. That is my main concern. And I want nobody to ever forget what happened here because I never will. So I want to thank the city for everything that they did and the fact they all stuck together and they're, my downtown is still there. Guys, right on. You're the best. So take care of yourself and this meeting is adjourned.